Good afternoon. Welcome to today's Planning Commission meeting. Tuesday, September 16th, 2025. Go through the roll call. I've chair, Richard Spiker, here. Also present is Colin Russ, Vice Chair, and Commissioner Jason Wazork. Mr. Wazarni is excused. Also present in the room is Jackie Spry, who is Director for the City of Planning, and our Secretary Cooper Moore. First item of business is approval of the August 19th meeting minutes.
Motion approved.
I had one amendment to it. It indicated that there was a presentation on the plans for the Miller Brothers property. I just think that the minutes should reflect that we were informed there were no plans at that time. Other than that, agreed?
We agree to the modification.
Yep.
Motion approved with correction.
Second?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Is there any public comment or correspondence?
We have not received any public comment or correspondence.
Thank you. We'll move on to item three of business, the Saldo Amendment Updates. Anything new to report there?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Jackie Spry. I'm the Director of Planning and Neighborhood Resources at the City of Erie. We had our public hearing on September 2nd, I believe it was. That doesn't seem like the right date, but I think it was September 2nd. Public hearing for the amendments of the subdivision and land development ordinance, Ordinance Number 231989. And there were no opposing comments to the during the public hearing. And tomorrow, council will do the first reading for the amendments of the ordinance. So we're on track to hopefully have it fully adopted at the beginning of October. That's all. Thanks.
All right. Item five, new business. Item A, subdivision and land development related. First up is Adam Trot related to Phase 1 of Miller Brothers.
Good afternoon, guys. Thanks for having us. I'm here on behalf of the Public Works Department of the City. I'm here to kind of give you an introduction to the project. There's the overall project of the public safety complex, and then there's our piece of it in the southeast corner that we're doing is Roth Mars Partnership, which is 22,000 square foot, pre-engineered, mostly pre-engineered metal building to relocate the fire department service garage from Marsh Street to this facility. So if you go down to the slide of the aerial, yeah, that one. Okay, so this is from Bostwick's Master Planning 40,000-foot altitude study. That study was essentially a fit study. The stuff we want, can it fit? So right now, what I'm talking about is that yellowish piece at the top. That's the pre-engineered metal building that we're essentially going to strip it down to the bones and then put new higher insulated wall panels and roof panels on it, get a nice energy efficient thermal envelope, and then move in and get all their stuff plus in there. What they're moving, they're not moving the entire fire department. They're moving specifically the storage and the service garage, okay? And if you, Cooper, if you go to the file tree and the one that's the existing Marsh Street plan, yeah, that's where they are right now. What you see on the bottom are offices and administration, that is staying at Marsh Street. That's not part of this work. This work is the big rectangle. It's exactly 9,700 square feet. We're taking that and we're moving it into the 22,000-square-foot facility, okay? And right now, you can see how everything's kind of crammed in there. They have essentially three service bays when you count the aisles coming into the garage. And if you read the article that was just in today's paper by Kevin Flowers, you know, the building's way too cramped. It was never designed for those kinds of loads on that floor that those huge vehicles put on that deck. So the building just is not adequate. So now, if you go to pull up the file tree and if you go to the photos at the top, that photo file, and just take the first one, and we'll like walk the photos along. So that's Marsh Street right now. You can go to the next one, Cooper. Yeah, you can just hit the arrow and it should jump seamlessly. Yeah, that thing. Okay, so you can see the ceiling's not that high, and they've got a lot of stuff that they access during their processes that they just need stuff around them, you know? So they're making the best that they can do. What you see on the left there in the corner, that's also Horus, the fire sniffing dog. That's his suite, we call it, okay? That's where they wash him after an incident and all that stuff. So if you go to the next one, this is where they're going. The bottom of the main beam there is 22 feet above the floor. Right now, they're working with around 13 feet. So if you read the article in today's paper, they explain how that's difficult. They actually have to do some servicing outside, regardless of the weather. So now they can do everything they want to do in here, and there's seven service bays now, clean service bays. Plus, that big open area in the middle, those wooden storage cabinets will be moved. That's where they can do everything they need to do with the ladder truck. So, you know, everything about this project, you can go ahead and go to the next picture, Cooper. That's another view of that open space. You can see, and then, yeah, and that's, if you go back to that picture, go to the next one. Okay, so the outside is just this. It's rusted, it's dented, it's horrible environmentally and energy-wise. So everything you see from the block up is a new skin. We correct things like accessible routes, accessible facilities, all that stuff gets corrected. And if you go to the next one? Okay, on 23rd Street, we put two new overhead doors to get out on the street. So there's some re-grading of that area to meet the existing street. But the whole point is through a lot of study and back and forth, we've got this thing working with their processes. Trucks can get in, get serviced, and get out. What I'm excited for is cleaning up that site. It's been like that for how many decades? And now it's going to have nice, new shiny building exterior to show the neighborhood that we see you, you know? I really like that. So then, if you jump out and go to bid plans? Yeah, so this thing is being done in two parts. One is the roof, because the roof failed in a portion. So we got to get that done right away. That's under contract. And then the rest is the overall project. So if you go to A100, yeah, so that's it in plan. And you can see five service bays along the south wall, along 23rd Street, two lift bays up on the north side. There's some built-out areas for storage, a conference room for conference and training. The dog suite is on the north wall. And then in the west wall is all plumbing, break room, gear storage, laundry. It's commendable, the mechanics at the fire department, as you can guess, they take their job very seriously. And one of the critical elements is cleaning the self-contained breathing apparatus, because that's got significant health concerns. So now they're able to have a place to do that the way they want to do it, instead of just taking whatever space they have on Marsh Street that they do it now. So there's just a whole lot of, everything's improved with this thing. So we're slated, if you go to the project schedule? Yeah, you'll have to go to the file tree, Cooper. Yeah, that's it. So essentially, we're past all this. So you can go to the second page. Yeah, so we're into the September, and you can see all those Xs. That's the bidding out of the main garage project now. And the roof is already happening. There's going to be an overlap. The roof will finish in December, and the rest of the project will kick in underneath it, literally. And we're looking to occupy like late August. So at that point, then, what you'll have is that southeast corner will be done. And the yard will stay fenced off, because that yard in the middle of the block becomes the construction yard for all the subsequent phases. So our project specifically orients towards French Street. The rest of the work will orient towards State Street. And when we're done with our 22,000 square feet, we have full separation from the whole rest of the site, which, as you can imagine, separation's not there now. There's all kinds of breaches with openings and things, so that's where we're at. I'm willing to take any questions.
I don't know that, Jason, do you have any?
No.
Okay, that's, there's no action required on our part, since it's already a foregone conclusion.
Yeah, and you guys have my email if you need to know anything, but.
It would be great to get some of those files, though. So I was looking for last month when we were requesting information. But any of those plans, you know, it'd be great for the commission to understand it and have it to be able to look over, as I said, even though it's a foregone conclusion.
So a few storytelling type of slides?
Just to understand what's going on.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, guys.
All right, next up, rezoning. 4125 Peach Street for Baldwin Brothers. Is someone here?
Good afternoon, gentlemen. My name is Drew Baldwin. I'm the petitioner for the parcel immediately adjacent to 4125 Peach Street. I'm requesting a map amendment from R1 to C2, so the parcel can be consolidated with 4125 Peach and reviewed as a single code-compliant commercial site. Both parcels are vacant previously. They were operated together under a commercial use. The Peach Street corridor is already commercial corridor. This change corrects a single R1 pocket and aligns the map with the existing conditions. Along the northern boundary of the site, there is an existing six-foot privacy fence adjacent to the R1 development that will remain. This request supports the reinvestment in the stronger tax base, and the unified site allows standard code-compliant internal access and circulation. For these reasons, I respectfully request a positive recommendation to the City Council for rezoning from R1 to C2. Thank you.
Cooper, any chance we have the map or the drawing that was included at the?
Yeah, I mean, looking at the pictures, it's already functioning. I'm honestly surprised that it's zoned R1 currently just based on its use. Curious how many properties are like that. I was saying, looking at the photos, it's already, you know, operating as, you know, paved over parking lot. So surprised that it was R1.
Was permitted as an R1?
Yeah, yeah, and what it's actual uses today. So, I mean, from my perspective, it just seems like probably oversight at some point in the past. Yeah, Jackie, is this for, I understand request for, you know, something supporting it, but is this, would this not come through zoning hearing board?
No. This is a zoning.
Got you. A variance. And it's the lot at the back there on the kind of lower right on the corner, correct? I mean, I guess motion to support, yeah, to, motion in support of, yeah, recommend. I'll move to recommend rezoning to council.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, waterfront conditional use. We have three items in this area. Start at 214 Cherry Street, West 2nd Street lots on West 3rd and Poplar Street, Arc Terrace. Is someone representing Arc Terrace here or on the Zoom?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. My name is Andrew Gibbs, representing Arc Terrace. Sorry, I can't be there in person today, but I will be there tomorrow. So great to reconnect with you all. So I've got a slide presentation that I'm happy to share that I believe looks similar to the prior presentation we shared with planning board. So I will go ahead and share my screen. Anyone have some objections that we know?
No, I think so. I think that we've all reviewed the initial proposal pretty thoroughly. So if you can address updates or changes, modifications to it, and that kind of thing, we would appreciate that.
Correct. So since we last spoke to Planning Commission, we made a couple of small changes to the plan. Tried to preserve the character of the plan, the architecture, but did make a couple of small changes based on recommendations from the Planning Commission members. One of those changes was to include more front porches that face the street. So what we did recommend is we have wraparound front porches here so that the fourplexes have an opportunity to both face the interior courtyard and also the street. So while we're still working on the architecture, these are very high-level plans. Our intent is to try to design a building that would have a wraparound porch like this to make this more outward facing with the street. Other just small details we included in the plan. One was just location on trash recycling. So here is our intent to put in the rear of the property. I think one thing I would mention is that these plans are still fairly conceptual. Our intent is after we get set plan approval is to formally engage our engineer to formalize these through a more schematic design development phase. During that phase, we probably would make some, continue to make some small changes here. But our intent is to kind of keep the plan generally as it is. So other than that, I've got the Opticoast team with us today, who was the site planner and architect. Nick, Alex, do you have any other comments that you want to address you think we missed here?
I think the only other comment that came up was about the mailboxes. And so we both labeled the location and showed them in the rendering intent for the mailbox. Yeah, there you go. That's kind of part of an element of where people gather and enter the community. I think that was all from our end.
Yeah, one other comment I would just add is we have been meeting with some additional neighbors in the area to try to see if there's any other changes we can make to the plan that would improve the overall quality and the way it interacts with the existing neighborhood. One of the items that we did here was a need for additional parking on site, which, you know, we understand has been conflated with some additional feedback. We heard initially, which is that we had too much parking. But I would just add that our intent is to try to figure out ways to add additional parking in the next phase of our design development here as well. But at the moment, the parking has 68 surface spots, 25 tuck runners, and 93 spaces total on the property for 61 units. So we're in excess of the code. But, you know, we want to be sympathetic to neighbor concerns, and to the extent we can, we can find ways to add additional parking spaces on site, we're going to look to do that in the next phase of development.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wazork, do you have any questions?
Appreciate the, you know, taking some of the feedback we provided last time and making those changes. It's nice to see. I like the porches.
Would note that a couple weeks ago, just after the first of the month, that the Design Review Committee, Subcommittee of the Planning Commission, reviewed the presentation and with a few comments, passed it unanimously. So at this point, do we be, we're not doing a formal sign-off on the entire detailed design of the project. They don't have drawings yet, is that correct?
Do we have an action on this, since it sounds like this is still kind of preliminary finishing out what the final plan is?
So you would take action on this today to make a motion to recommend the application go to council, because that's the next step for the design review? Because it is in the overlay this week? So you're recommending to council that?
Conditional use be approved?
Yes.
Forgive me, but what is the conditional use that we are recommending be approved?
The fact that it can be occur at all. No development in this zoning district can occur without a conditional use approval by City Council.
We've got to fix that. We've got to fix that. Yep, I know.
That's what the law's written.
Yep. I will move to?
I can provide more detail on the comments from the Design Review Committee.
That'd be great.
The commission would like to hear them. So the Design Review Committee requested and received confirmation that the project would be using native plants throughout the site. They acknowledged the historic precedent for the style of this application. They learned that a local management company will be hired to maintain and facilitate the project, and they cited it as an example of walkable new urbanism and said, in the future, moving forward to the process, we'd be looking for details on colors and fixtures and styles and everything visible from the outside.
So upon us making the recommendation to City Council, what happens next is a public hearing is scheduled. And after the public hearing, then they'll go, it will, two public hearings or two meetings?
Nine public hearings.
I'm willing to make a recommendation.
After the public hearing, Rich, council can act on resolution approving the application out of all. They don't have to do two hearings.
Okay, thank you.
I can, I'll move to recommend council approval?
I'd like to amend it. It says, we'll recommend, the council approve it subject to receipt of the outstanding items as requested by the Design Review Subcommittee and as required by the zoning ordinance.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on it? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Nay. I got a nay.
And a nay. Excuse me. All right, thank you. Two to one.
Great, thank you. Can we get further clarification on what those outstanding items are?
The details that we'll discuss. Colors, materials, exterior fixtures, siding. Answer the question regarding details of where, how trash is being dealt with on the site, things like that. All the things that were talked about at the initial meeting and at the Design Review Committee, you know, a detailed planning plan that locks in the fact that you're going to do native plants.
We have all that, so we'll follow up with that and forward to City Council tomorrow.
Thank you. Next item is 263 West Front Street, McGeary Partners. Anybody here representing McGeary Partners?
Yeah, hello, I'm Dane with Interface of the Architects. We will be presenting for McGeary Partners.
Okay.
I'll share on the screen.
Same kind of thing that updates to the presentation to the, well, this is the first time that members have seen this, right?
Yeah, we had to email those.
Okay. So you can present the scheme and the items under discussion. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Let me share here. Can everyone see our, see the presentation?
Yep.
Thank you. Hello, everybody, thank you for having us. As I said, I'm Dane, this is Christine sitting next to me, we're with Interface Studio Architects, representing McEary Partners on the project of 263 West Front Street. So the project consists is a, on nine lots that have been consolidated in the West Bay Front neighborhood over the past five years. We're proposing two three-story buildings with a total of 30 units. The one building will have 11 units that parallels Myrtle Street, and the other will have 19 units that parallels Short Street. Our design's aim is to utilize materials and material patterns and building forms of the surrounding area in a modern way, prioritizing views to the, to the lake. As you can see here, this is the site, Front Street. Up here along this edge, Myrtle and Short, we hit all three streets with the long edge along Myrtle and Short. So our site plan shows two buildings. The one along Short Street is the 19-unit building, and the one paralleling Myrtle is the 11-unit building with parking in between totaling like 30 parking spaces. The primary entrance to the parking will be along Myrtle, with the secondary entrance along Short with to allow potential trash pickup in this back corner of the site. As I said, there is building one on the left, 19 units, approximately, you know, 18,750 gross square feet. The building two in front is about 13,700 gross square feet. It consists of a mix of 1 beds and 2 beds. The building one has 13 1 beds and 2 2 beds. And building two along Myrtle Street has 11 2 bedrooms, all of which have either a deck or a balcony or deck that has, gives some visibility to the lake. We meet all of the various setback requirements on all of, all of the streets, as well as the required parking and underneath the, you know, maximum heights and building coverage. This is our simple site plan, kind of showing similar information, showing our parking. This showed, showed some lighting for the parking. One of the comments from the Design Review was to dive a little further into the lighting that's going to happen into the parking lot. So we, we had a, you know, lighting study done with the proposed lighting fixtures that are on, in the parking lot, showing that, you know, we're providing ample light to the parking lot, but not bleeding or leaking over into the adjacent properties by utilizing shields on various lights to make sure that they are, we're only lighting our site and not, you know, other people's properties. This is what we presented previously, which was the landscape plan. One of the comments here, basically we're providing landscaping around the buildings as well as some street trees and trees in the parking lot. One of the comments was to provide additional landscaping around building two, as the site does have a deeper topography on that, you know, on the corner of front and Myrtle. So this is a proposal we have, we're going to refine this a little further, but you'll see that we're attempting to provide some landscaping to, to block the, the foundation that sticks out above the ground, making it a little bit more aesthetically pleasing. These are the building sections. All the apartments are flat, you know, flat apartments, flats, and have either balconies or inset balconies that face the lake. You can see, you know, max height is 44 feet 90 inches plus or minus on building one, and 40 feet 7 inches on building two. The mean roof height is 37 and 34 or 35 on each of those. This is the general layout of the building and how the units are laid out. So building one, the top one, that's the larger of the two, that has, that is along Short Street. So Short Street's at the bottom of the page here, and Myrtle is on the long left of the page. The lake would be north of the page. So all of the units, you know, kind of wrap around to the lakeside to allow windows and balconies to face the, the lake. The units on the first floor have some small outdoor space for their individual unit that is between the building and the parking lot. So there's a lobby, you know, the building is kind of connected at the first floor, and as you go up past the first floor, there's essentially a four-unit building on the left and a three-unit building on the right that is served by this single B stairs, all of which have balconies that face the, the lake. Building two is the one that has the short side along Front Street and the long side along Myrtle. All of these are 2-bed apartments. So this is the first floor, the parking lot's to the right, the lake's to the left. So you can have an entry with maybe a small amenity fitness space, a mechanical space and mail, and a single stair that takes you up to the other levels, which basically have two, four 2-beds on each level. The 2 beds that are on the lakeside have balconies, and the 2 beds that are away from the lakeside have inset balconies, you know, more decks than, than a balcony, than an attached balcony. This is what we presented last time. The, the comment was to drill down a little bit deeper on the actual type of materials. So we're, here is our presentation of what we're expecting to utilize, materials we're expecting to utilize. Essentially, we have an A/B scheme. One building has the A scheme, that building one has the A scheme, and building two has the B scheme, with a dark, darker hardy fiber cement shingle look siding in the iron gray color that will match the, kind of the roof shingles. And then on the building two, a lighter hardy fiber cement shingle, lighter gray. The other facades, like, we're kind of thinking of this as a coarse, medium, fine material. So the coarse material is the outermost material of this fiber cement. The next level is this medium material, which we're proposing a standing seam metal, kind of a, you know, you know, the dark has a lighter, the darker fiber cement has a lighter standing seam, the lighter fiber cement has a darker standing seam, showing ATAS products for those facades. And then the finer scheme, like the finest material would be a corrugated, seven inch corrugated metal panel that would be on these larger facades here. So, you know, we have our fine or our coarse material stepping into our medium or, or medium material and our fine material, right? So this is our Short Street elevation, showing the entrance on the big building, and this is the elevation that faces the lake. So this is our smaller building with a larger building in the background. All of the balconies are proposing to have like an expanded metal mesh guardrail that we would also use at the fenced-in garden or outdoor spaces for the units on building one that face, that are adjacent to the parking lot. Moving onward, this is what we presented previously. The only change is that we added, we're starting to add landscaping, which was a request by the Designer Committee, along the Myrtle Street facade. Here's what we presented previously. You can see here, this is where the foundation starts to kind of poke up above the ground due to the topography. So we're kind of starting to, you know, frame that, frame that area with some more landscaping along those areas. You can see here, similarly, along the lakeside, Front Street side, similarly adding some landscaping at those areas. All of the landscaping will be native plants bought at a local nursery, and that, yeah, that's the plan for landscaping. And then this is the Short Street facade, which has, has remained unchanged since the previous presentation. I think that's kind of where we landed and, you know, anxious to hear your questions and comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, do you have any comments, questions?
I think the siding is great. I don't, I don't know. Scale looks good.
I'm curious what the comments were from the Design Review Committee. Just, I'm not seeing anything here that resembles the character or essence of the existing community. Not, not getting into design, but just purely, you know, siding, windows. I, it just, I'm, it seems like it's something that's going to stick out quite noticeably from the character of the existing area. And I, I do mean that with utmost respect. I am, you know, big fan of seeing these types of projects come here, but having said that, this just, I'm not seeing how this aligns with the, the existing character.
So the comments from the Design Review Committee included the removal and replacement of street trees, concerns about whether the trees that would be taken out would be replaced. They observed a lack of third spaces for each unit, especially when compared to the previous application. They did say that it checks out from a historical perspective, and similarly will look for details on finishes, colors, and styles moving forward. There was also a question about the material of the foundation, or foundations, whether they would be blocks or poured concrete, but did render preliminary approval.
I think you could make a pretty solid argument that we've lost the bluff as having any coherence.
Not, yeah. No, no, I don't disagree with that. I mean, just wants to, I guess I'm just thinking of, you know, West Bay Front as more generally, not just separately, as the bluff, and thinking how this doesn't affect, but you're right.
I feel like this aligns with the ones, the aesthetic at the other end, the Jesuit The projects at the other end of the bluff, this kind of borrows from those aesthetics, right? So it's, I don't think this is alien from anything we've seen before.
No further comments or questions? Have a, a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Can I suggest we amend it as the previous one for submission, detailed submission of all the items required by the zoning code, materials, colors, light, exterior light fixtures, that kind of stuff? I know you've included it here, but I don't see a product name, a color, those kind of things that say this is what the intent is, what the explicit intent, what, where's the, a detailed planting plan that documents the use of native plants, et cetera?
I would agree with that.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
So does this, for the planting plan as an example, as calling out the various plants that are in these locations, is that not sufficient, or are you looking for additional information?
Well, as none of us are landscape architects, and does that specifically list the size, the species in particular? Then I'd say...
Yeah, so if I zoom in here.
Okay. If, if that's, if, if that plan does that, then that one has been addressed, I would say.
And then similarly to the, the materials, we are calling out like hardy fiber cement, shingle, straight edge, iron gray. So like a specific product, specific color.
Okay. Then I'll stand corrected.
Sorry, I didn't mean to be, I just wanted to make sure, see what else we needed to do. So apologies.
Yeah. Well, you still have exterior light fixtures, that kind of thing?
We have the lighting for the parking, which we've clarified here on this plan, showing the, the, you know, standing lighting for the parking lot.
I mean, I think it's, the, the one condition we're putting on it was making sure all the boxes are checked. So if it ends up that it is, you know, Cooper's able to verify everything someplace, then, you know, I think it's, are willing to give that recommendation pending that.
Understood. Okay. We'll coordinate with Cooper to see exactly if we need, what other else, what other information we should provide.
Dr. Cooper.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. All in, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? None? Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Have a wonderful day.
Item three, or C rather, 10 Sasfras Pier, Beeler and Associates.
Do you have a drawing, Cooper?
Yes.
That's not it. Yeah, I have this thumb draw if you need it. I'm Sheldon Beeler with Beeler and Associates. I'm representing Erie Events. Gus Pine, the executive director, is also in attendance, and Neil Wirth with Erie Events are also here. So we are adding two levels of parking to the existing three-story parking garage at the Bayfront, which is adjacent to the Marriott. It'll add 232 parking spaces, and it'll help with the overflow from the convention center, the Marriott, and any future development on that site. We are adding a small canopy entrance on the east side, just from, people at the convention center can see where the entrance is to get back to the parking ramp. And then around that will be just a few landscape bushes that'll match what's already there to infill around what the new construction is for that canopy. Can you go to the next slide, please? So you can see it here on the bottom of the page as well. You can keep going. So we're adding three stories, and we are, two extra stories to go to five stories. We meet the zoning requirement, we go to 49 feet 8 inches. So we're, we meet the zoning requirements for there, and we're not adding any other footprint other than that canopy. So if you want to keep going here. So our materials, we're going to match the existing. And we're going to meet all the handicap requirements, security in the stairwells. The stairwells on the top will have an enclosed aluminum storefront enclosure just on that fifth floor. And, so on this slide, you can see on the west side, we are adding snow screens, if you will. The snow here, this, I was amazed, the snow went right through the, from the west side to the east side, and then it gets, the wind makes it all icy in there. So we're adding screens on the west side, which will be a clear anodized aluminum, which will be applied over the openings. We can't do 100% because we still have to have airflow for the ventilation of the parking ramp. So if you want to go to the next one, and the next one. These are all, this is the top floor, so we're adding lighting. This is going to be the same type of lighting that's already there, it'll be raised up to the fifth level. On the top left photo, you can see that we are using this, we're going to use the same material. We're going to match the brick, we're going to match the precast, we're going to match the concrete, cast-in-place concrete. Same thing in the next photo. That's where that little canopy will go at the end of that sidewalk. So when you're walking from the east side, you'll see how to enter into that garage if you're not coming through the lobby space on the north side. So the other, the top three photos show we're going to match what's existing, it's just going to be up two extra levels. Same with the bottom left photos. The bottom right photo shows the enclosure, we're going to match that enclosure that's already there with the storefront aluminum enclosures around the stairs and the elevator. We're also extending the elevators. And on the bottom photo, you're, those are the types of screens we're going to add to the west side to help block the snow that blows in on that side. That's kind of the project in a nutshell. Any questions?
So the entrance to Pier Six is then under, undercover now, right?
It'll be undercover, still on the third floor. That's not changing. But you'll just go to the third floor, and then the same way you go in now on that back door with that ramp, you'll still go in the same way.
They'll be able to stay in business?
Yes. Yes. Lot of logistics, yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Colin, Eddie?
Nope.
All right. Any, no further questions? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item E, Design Review Committee Meetings and Discussion and Action to nominate Sarah Ludwig to the Design Review Subcommittee. I'll note that I, after our last meeting, I approached Sarah who works for Webber Murphy Fox and is a city resident about joining the Design Review Subcommittee. She expressed some interest, discussed it further with Jackie, submitted her resume, among other things. So.
When you approve her appointment.
Do you need a motion to approve?
Licensed architect or?
Yeah, she's a licensed architect.
I was about to say, we're already pulling from such a small pool to begin with. I think if we've got a willing candidate, let's.
I would like to make a motion to capture our willing participant.
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. You'll notify her and include her in future activities. Planning Commission alternate appointment. Anything significant related to that?
Just to inform the commission that the mayor has appointed an alternate member to the planning commission. You received the materials that we received, Carl J. Anderson III. So, you'll begin to see Carl included on our communications and he will be called up if needed.
And when does that take effect?
Immediately.
Okay. All right. So.
I believe Cooper, he was notified at the meeting, yes.
Okay.
And alternates are able to attend the meeting. They just they don't have access unless they're a member.
Right. So, the fact that we're one member down would mean that if he would have attended, he could have participated and been a voting member. Thank you. Annual report. Anything further to report on the annual report?
Nothing really to report. The annual report for the planning commission for the year of 2024 was completed and sent to the commission. So, if there are no edits to the report, it will be passed along to City Council.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Item six, Department of Planning and Neighborhood Resources Updates.
Good afternoon again. I wanted to report that for our Erie outside comprehensive recreation parks and open space plan, we had, we have right now over 1,500 comments from the public that we've received. We are moving into the next phase of the plan and this next phase is really going to drill down on stakeholder meetings. We are going to also be doing internal meetings, especially with Public Works and Bureau of Parks. And there'll be another study committee meeting on October 6th. You should receive an email from me today, this afternoon, later this afternoon, asking about times for that meeting. So, please look out. Also, wanted to update you on our map grant for DECD. As you know, we put in a application in March of this year to the state for a rewrite of the zoning and the SADO, a full rewrite of the SADO. I have been in contact with the state this, just yesterday, asking what's the status and as we know that the state budget has not been approved and the hope is by the end of this month that they will pass the budget and notify the applicants of those grants. So, there was really not much of an update, but I did want you to know that we're trying to keep track. We are planning to start writing and crafting the RFP for that, for a consultant to do this project. And we can even post that RFP pending, obviously pending and notifying in the RFP that it's pending the grant application. So, I have, I've already started, started kind of crafting that RFP and hope to potentially post that within the next couple of weeks. Lastly, I just wanted to let you know that the American Planning Association, the Pennsylvania chapter, is holding its annual conference in Harrisburg this year and four of our, four staff, including myself, are attending that conference October 12 through the 15th. So, we'll be there and each of the staff has picked different sessions that pertain to either their position or to things that we would like to develop here at the city in the future. So, there's a lot of good information that we hope to bring back to Erie. We've extended our travel one day and we plan to go to Lancaster after the conference and spend the day with the planning department, neighborhood resources at in Lancaster. So, we're trying to understand what they're doing, the progress that they've made. They tend to be a model for us in different ways in our department and of course, they've been a model for the CRIS as well. So, we, we hope to soak in all of the things that they're doing and again, bring back that to the city of Erie. That's all I have. Are there any questions regarding the parks plan or anything else that you've heard in the last couple of months?
Regarding the stakeholders, who's, who do you reach out to with respect to that plan?
We, we're working on a list and we're almost finalized with it, but we hope to talk to neighboring municipalities, especially Mill Creek, Presque Isle Partnership and the Trek Center. We will be talking to the Port Authority, many of the other stakeholders that are and partners that are directly not, well, directly impacted by what the plan, what the plan will be. So.
Neighborhood associations.
We've already, we, that is part of this second phase. We're continuing to have a survey up on our website that's very much like the pop-up event that we held at, at the Boston store during Celebrate Erie, but we are going to be going over the next two months to neighborhood organization, neighborhood watch meetings, neighborhood groups and doing a small presentation of what this plan is and then having those participants of the meeting take that survey right with them and walk them through it. So, on their phone, tablet, we're going to bring a few tablets. So, we are going to continue to do outreach at the neighborhood level because there are so many neighborhood parks within the city of Erie, not just the destination parks, but also those small, smaller neighborhood parks and ask them similar questions. What amenities are they looking for? Access, connections, those types of things that we talked about at the pop-up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll also note that about 10 people from my office had a chance to review the
Materials.
Details of the information presented by the pop-up. Cooper and Jackie both were very kind and hosted us. I thought it was a useful professional development opportunity on our part and I appreciate their reaching out and offering to help. Thank you.
Thank you.
All said, nothing else on the agenda? There are no other comments? Then I'm going to make a motion or ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.